Anne, I had to re-log back in. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, I can hear you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anne, can you hear me okay? This is Mark.
Yes, Marcus, I can hear you.
Okay.
And this is Virgil Robinson. Can you hear me okay?
Good afternoon, Mr. Robinson. Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon, Anne. It's Erica, just testing.
Hi, Erica, I can hear you.
Thank you.
Anne, Sean Murphy, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can.
Thank you.
Hey, this is Tom Kitchen.
Hi, Mr. Kitchen, I can, yes, sir, I can.
Okay, good, good. It's the first time I'm using my iPad, so I wasn't sure it would work right, but it looks like it's working fine. Thank you.
Yes, sir, I can see and hear you. Thank you.
Good. Too bad you can't see me.
Ed Crawford.
Hi, Mr. Crawford.
Ed Crawford. You can't see me because I've got a lot of other stuff I'm doing while I'm pretending to pay attention.
Anne, can you hear me? This is Lola.
Yes, ma'am, I can hear you.
Thanks.
Uh, this is James.
Hi, Mr. Carter, we can hear you.
All right, thank you.
Let me get out your mic. Are you starting? Like I live there really well. You did well. You kind of stay wide away with me. I'll let him do it. I understand that it's too much.
Dr. Pam.
Hey, Dr. James.
How you doing?
I'm good. I have to keep unmuting myself.
Yeah, I understand.
I heard this one, man. Members, just so you know, we have a number of the presidents just sitting off to the side in the peanut gallery over there, so if you hear some rambunctiousness, that's who it is. I like that ceiling here. Tom Kitchen. Nice texture, Tom.
I'm trying to find something to prop up this iPad. There we go. That's a little better.
So in the interest of getting started, guys, uh, guys and girls, we'll go ahead and call our meeting in order. Good afternoon, and I now call to order today's meeting of the Board of Supervisors for the University of Louisiana System. Before we begin, Carol, if you will, please call the roll.
Ms. Olivia Bailey?
Here.
Dr. James Carter. Dr. Jimmy Clark.
Here.
Dr. John Kondos. Mr. Edward Crawford.
Here.
Ms. Lola Dunahoe.
Present.
Dr. Pam Egan.
Present.
Tom Kitchen.
I'm here.
Mimi Methvin.
Here.
Mr. Sean Murphy. Mr. Sean Murphy.
Here.
Mr. Al Perkins. Ms. Elizabeth Pierre.
Here.
Mr. Virgil Robinson.
Here.
Mr. Mark Romero.
Here.
Ms. Christine Russell. Mr. Joe Salter.
Here.
Mr. Carter, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, I got you. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Carol. In order to proceed with today's meeting, I need a motion and second to accept the certificate of inability to operate in order to comply with directives of the Governor, the CDC, and the local and state governing health authorities and officials.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Bill by Mr. Murphy.
Second.
Second by Ms. Pierre. Carol, if you would, please call the roll.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford? Ms. Dunahoe?
Yes.
Dr. Egan?
Yes.
Crawford, too. Sorry.
Okay, Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Ms. Methvin?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins? Ms. Pierre?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
And Mr. Salter?
Here.
It's approved.
Thank you, Carol. I'd like to further advise you that the content of today's hybrid meeting, including chat, is being recorded and subject to public records requests, so please keep that in mind as we conduct business. To members of the public who are viewing this via YouTube, be reminded that anyone who wishes to make a public comment on a particular agenda item can email publiccomment@ulsystem.edu, and along with your comment, please include your full name, affiliation, as well as the agenda item upon which you are interested in commenting. Mr. Salter, if you would, lead us in indication this morning, this afternoon.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity we have to meet today, and we ask Lord for your guidance, and as always, Lord, it's our desire and our wish that the decisions that we make, Lord, will be in the best interest of our students and the taxpayers of our state. Lord, we are in trying times socially and health-wise, Lord, and many who are recovering from the storms, and so, Lord, we're in need of your help more than ever, and we would pray, Lord, that you would give us your understanding, you provide us leadership, and you provide us wisdom. And, Lord, also, as we approach this election season, election time, we ask that you would give us open minds, Lord, and help us to know what we need to do, what's in the best interest of our country, and we thank you, Lord, for those who offered themselves for office at all levels, and we'd ask that, again, you would guide and direct us as we make these decisions. We thank you for your meek blessings and ask for forgiveness of sin for Christ's sake. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Salter. Also, if we could consider a motion and second to approve the minutes for our September 3rd and our September special meeting, as well as our September 3rd and 4th regular board meeting.
I move approval.
Second.
Now, Mr. Robinson, second by Ms. Dunahoe. Carol, if you could call the roll.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Dunahoe?
Yes.
Dr. Egan?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Ms. Methvin?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins? Ms. Pierre?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
And Mr. Salter?
Yes.
That's approved.
Thank you, Carol.
Yeah, thank you.
Today, we're a meeting as a committee of the whole, and every member can vote on all items that we have in the various committee agendas. As has been our practice, the chairs of the committees will conduct the business of each particular committee, and I'd ask if you have any questions that we proceed. May I have a motion to dispense with committee deliberations and meet as a committee of the whole?
So move.
Second.
Second by Mr. Salter. Carol, if you could, please call the roll.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Dunahoe?
Yes.
Dr. Egan?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Ms. Methvin?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Pierre?
Yes.
Ms. Rob, Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
And Mr. Salter?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Carol. Uh, I know you had, I know we had a meeting prior to the board meeting today of the grievance committee, and I'd ask Dr. Egan if she would please give us a report on the grievance committee at this time.
Let me get myself unmuted here. Mr. Romero, the grievance committee met earlier today, and after careful review of the process used by Southeastern Louisiana University, the committee recommended that the grievances filed by Dr. Tran be denied. Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the committee.
Dr. Egan has a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Salter. See the discussion? All in favor? Actually, we actually roll call. Carol, if you would call the roll.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Clark?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Dunahoe?
Yes.
Dr. Egan?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Ms. Methvin?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins? Ms. Pierre?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
And Mr. Salter?
Yes.
The motion passed.
Thank you, Carol. Next, we'll have a report from Academic and Student Affairs, Ms. Dunahoe.
Thank you. We have four items on the Academic and Student Affairs Committee agenda today. All are consent items and require approval. Each member previously received executive summaries and associated information on these items. Dr. Janine Khan, Provost and Vice President for Academic Affairs, will provide the report. Dr. Khan?
Thank you, Ms. Dunahoe, and good afternoon to you, Chair Romero, President Henderson, and other members of the board. We do have four items for your consideration today, and I will walk you through each briefly. Agenda item E1 is a request from Northwestern State University to offer an undergraduate certificate in remote system science and technology. Today, we have Dr. Haley, who is Professor of Anthropology and Archaeology at Northwestern, will be joining us techno, tech, zooming through, to provide you with an overview of the proposed undergraduate certificate. Dr. Haley? I think you need to unmute yourself, Dr. Haley.
Good afternoon, can you hear me? Okay, wonderful. Um, I am a professor of archaeology and anthropology, and so my background and training is, is in specifically in the study of ancient civilizations, but, uh, my interest is in methodology, and so how that, and how we can gain knowledge in different ways. It's been that way throughout my career, so I've been working land sites, terrestrial sites, so I'm trained in underwater archaeology, and for about the past almost 20 years now, I've been doing aerial archaeology, aerial photography, and exploring different ways to gather, to gather data. One of the things that, um, initially I was using an ultralight, but then as, as aerial drones became available, I switched over to that technology because it's cheaper and more available to people, so when I teach school, you know, in my classes, then that's something students can more readily. But then, uh, in the spring of 2019, J.D. Cox, who teaches in biology here at Northwestern, stopped by my office to tell me about what he's been doing with, with, uh, using aerial drones and his work, and, uh, we, as, just as we started talking, we said, you know, if you think about it, there are so many different departments, so many disciplines here on campus that could benefit from remote technology, whether it's underwater technology, or terrestrial, or aerial, and, uh, as we, as we spoke with members, faculty members, and with department heads, and with, uh, non-academic personnel, and with administrators, we realized this was a wonderful opportunity to pool our resources and, and devise this undergraduate certificate that would be available to multiple majors benefiting a wide range of students, and, uh, and they could get specific training in the way remote technology is used in different fields, and also, um, training from their individual departments and how it would apply directly to them. And our goal here is to enhance the majors that we already have, uh, and, uh, give them a certificate that will, that I think will give them an edge in the job market, and also will benefit them in their future careers.
Thank you, Dr. Haley. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Haley at this time? Right, we'll move forward with agenda item E2, which is a request from Southeastern Louisiana University to offer a Bachelor of Science in Integrated Science and Technology. The letter of intent for this program was approved by, by this board in August 2018. The proposed program will serve as a flexible STEM program that can be adapted to fast-changing and diverse science and technology-related careers. This will be accomplished via a very innovative curriculum composed of general education requirements, a broad scientific foundation to include six to eight hours in biology, chemistry, mathematics, and physics, three hours of computer science, required courses focused on communication skills and reasoning ability, three interdisciplinary science/technology courses, and 36 hours of electives to be split between two focus areas chosen from the departments within the College of Science and Technology. The proposed program will offer students a rigorous but a more nimble alternative to obtain a STEM degree tailored to meet individual needs. Agenda item E3 is a request from the University of Louisiana Monroe for approval to offer a PhD in pharmacology. Since 1968, ULM has offered a PhD in pharmacy, which now offers areas of specialization in medicinal chemistry, pharmaceutics, pharmacology, and toxicology. The university would like to take the existing pharmacology area of specialization and convert it into its own new separate doctoral program. The rationale for this request is that a standalone degree in pharmacology will better clarify what the university has to offer. Potential students seeking doctoral training in pharmacology often overlook ULM's program, thinking the existing PhD in pharmacy is primarily focused on clinical pharmacy. In addition, graduates from ULM's current graduate program earn a degree in pharmacy, and this degree title does not spotlight their training and expertise in pharmacology, if that is the area that's selected for their focus. And lastly, E4 is a request from the University of New Orleans to award an honorary degree of humane letters to Misty, Mr. Harry Shear at the Fall 2020 Commencement Exercises. Known for his work as a comedian, voiceover actor, filmmaker, broadcaster, and author, ULM would like to recognize Mr. Shear for his contributions to New Orleans and to the university by awarding this honorary degree. And with that, Ms. Dunahoe, our items are concluded. As my summary presents information, of course, I'm happy to answer any questions members might have.
Uh, do any of the board members have questions for Dr. Khan regarding these four items? Are there any comments or questions from the public? If not, if no one refi, requires further clarification, I would like to recommend approval of items E1 through E4. Do I have a motion to that regard?
A move.
Second.
Um, move by whom?
Sean Murphy.
Seconded by?
Pam Egan.
Thank you very much. Um, if you will take a roll call, Carol?
Uh, Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Dunahoe?
Yes.
Dr. Egan?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Ms. Methvin?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins? Mr. Pierre, Ms. Pierre?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
And Mr. Salter?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Um, I didn't hear just any dissent, so we'll skip over to other businesses. Is there any other business to come before this committee?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Khan and, uh, Mr. Romero. On to athletics. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunahoe, and, uh, Ms., Mr. Janay informed me that, uh, Mr. Murphy is trying to preserve his voice for a huge upcoming sporting event to schedule for this fall, and he's asked that Mr. Salter serve as pinch chairman. So Mr. Salter will address athletics.
My pleasure. Plus, I need the money. Send the check, Mr. Murphy. Three items on the athletic committee today, and, uh, Mr. Janay will provide an overview of the consent items by campus. Mr. Janay?
Uh, thank you so much for pinching, uh, Speaker Salter. Uh, item F1 is from Nickel State University requesting approval of a contract with James Clont, who's their head basketball coach, effective October 28th of 2020. This is a renewal of an existing contract. Item F2 is from University of Lafayette requesting a new contract for approval with Theo Silma, the head men's golf coach, effective July 1st, 2020. And item F3, also from University of Lafayette, requesting approval of an amendment to an existing contract with Timothy LaJie, who, who was an assistant football coach, effective July 1st, 2020. And that concludes the item of the half, Speaker Salter.
All of these agenda items have been reviewed by staff and are recommended for approval. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Any comments from the public? I would ask for a motion then and a second for approval of items F1, the F3.
Amen.
Is Dunahoe offered the motions or a second?
Second.
Mr. Murphy, second?
Yes, sir, and the check's in the mail.
Thank you very, I've heard that before. Is there any, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We have to do roll call.
Roll call.
All right, let's do roll call. I'm sorry. Carol, if you'd do the roll call.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Dunahoe?
Yes.
Dr. Egan?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Ms. Methvin?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Pierre?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Salter?
Yes.
The motion's approved.
You have any other business at this time? If not, that concludes the business of the athletic committee, and, um, Mr. President, uh, Chairman, his, um, facilities planning is next.
Thank you, Mr. Salter. You know, you see, Dr. Perkins' absence, and in consideration of his virtual participation, I'll handle the facilities planning committee items. Uh, Mr. Janay will provide an overview of the agenda items by campus. Bruce?
Uh, thank you so much, Mr. Romero. Item G1 is from Louisiana Tech University, requests for approval to name a new wing in their college of business, the Cox Family Atrium. At the request of the Cox family, the university asked that this, uh, that this atrium is named in memory of Orville O.D. Cox, who highly supported education and had several generations of family members to attend Louisiana Tech. Dr. Guy, who's provided me and also the board with a very detailed letter, we, you know, that supports the naming. Item G2 is from University of Lafayette requesting approval of a ground lease with raging Cajun facilities to construct a photovoltaic applied research and testing laboratory, or a port lab, which is authorized by state law to do so. The port lab will be located next to the university's solar farm in the university's common research park, which will serve as a vehicle for understanding, creating, and employing solar electric power, as well as to provide students with practical experience and better career opportunities in the solar power services sector. The lease property will revert back to the university upon completion of the project. Item G3 is all from, so from University of Lafayette, were, as required by board policy for approval to demolish the Roberts House apartment building due to high maintenance costs and current termite-ridden conditions. Item G4. The G4 is from University of New Orleans, requests for approval to enter into a lease agreement with the Heinz Toyota School Corporation and Friends of Heinz, which are both nonprofit corporations pursuant to state law. This agreement was developed from the memorandum of, uh, understanding, which was previously approved by the board in February of 2019. The Friends of Heinz will design and construct, at its so-called, a facility to house a charter school, and will execute a sublease with Heinz to provide quality education for kindergarten for kindergarten through eighth-grade students in that area. The initial term of the lease is for five years. And those are the four items I have, Mr. Romero.
Thank you, Bruce. All the agenda items have been reviewed by board and legal staff and are recommended for approval. Of course, if any member has a question or wishes to discuss any of the items, please let me know. Are there any questions, comments from the board? Any comments from the public? If no one requires further clarification on the items presented, may I have a motion and a second for approval of Items G1 and G4? Moved by Liz, seconded by Mr. Salter. Carol, if you could please call the roll.
Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Carter? Dr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Dunahoe?
Yes.
Dr. Egan? Dr. Egan? Ms. Kitchen? Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Ms. Methfin?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Pierre?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Yes.
The motion's approved.
Thank you, Carol. Do we have any other business to come before the Facilities Committee meeting, committee at this time? If not, that concludes the business of the Facilities Planning Committee, and Mr. Kitchen will address items on the financing.
Thank you, Mr. Romero. The committee has four consent items on the agenda today. If any member has a question or wishes to discuss any of these items, please let me know. Charles Wendt will provide an overview of Items 1 and 2. Charles?
Thank you, Mr. Kitchen and members of the board. I will discuss Items H1 first, which is Louisiana Tech's request for approval to enter into an affiliation agreement with the Louisiana Tech Applied Research Corporation, which is a separate 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation with a separate governing board to provide applied research and contracting services for large as well as support and facilities for classified contracts. The agreement will allow the corporation to provide research and contracting support services to the university on externally funded contracts, including contracts funded through the Department of Defense. Additionally, the corporation will provide services for the university personnel engaging in classified work at the secret and top-secret levels of the Department of Defense. It's anticipated that faculty and researchers from various centers and colleges at the university, including the corporation, will work on contract service about a corporation, and the affiliation agreement will enable those interactions to occur seamlessly. Item number 2, H2, is the University of New Orleans' request for the approval of a resolution granting authority for the issuance of the Board of Supervisors for the University of Louisiana system bonds not to exceed $8 million in one or more series. And the purposes of the resolution are to adopt a form of notice of intent to issue bonds, making application to the State Bond Commission, authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement, and certain financing documents required for the issuance of the bonds and otherwise providing respect there too. What the university is requesting for the use of the funds is to provide funds to finance the acquisition of cloud-based enterprise resource planning software, funding the debt service reserve fund if required or necessary, and also for paying the cost of the issuance of the bonds. Those are the first two items. Mr. Kitchen?
Thank you, Mr. Wendt. Bruce, Janae will cover Items 3 and 4. Bruce?
Thanks so much, Mr. Kitchen. Yes, Item H3 is from Universal Within a System requests for acceptance of revised internal audit charters for gambling Louisiana Tech, Nichols, Northwestern, Southeastern, University of Louisiana at Monroe, Universal Louisiana System, and also from University of New Orleans. Specific updates have been made to these charters to eliminate or reference to have an external validation conducted by July 31st, 2020, since that date has passed, and changing these charters to note that we will have an external validation every five years as required by the standards for professional practice of internal auditing. Item H4, Universal Within a System requests for acceptance of the fiscal year 2019-20 Financial and Compliance Questionnaire for the University of Louisiana System. The Office of Legislative Auditor requested the board approve this letter. It has been signed by Dr. Henderson and also Charles Wendt, and all their responses were positive, Mr. Kitchen. Item H5 is a discussion item from Universal Within a System report on internal and external audit.
Bruce, before you continue, I believe we may need to vote on those consent items. So, you know, hold on one second. Are there any questions or comments from the board on Items 1 through 4?
Yes. Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
I would just like a clarification on Item 3. Why was the University of Louisiana at Lafayette not included?
Ms. Dunahoe, the, you know, several of the charters that are not present did not have that specific reference, especially, Universal Within Lafayette just says that they would do an external validation every five years by standards, whereas the other charters had a specific date mentioned.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification.
Very well.
Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the public? If not, may I have a motion and a second for approval of the consent items?
Amen.
Okay, Ms. Dunahoe moved, second?
Virgil seconds.
Okay, Virgil Robinson seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Carol, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Dunahoe?
Yes.
Dr. Egan?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Ms. Methfin?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Pierre?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Salter?
Yes.
The motion's approved.
Okay. We do have two discussion items on the finance agenda today. Bruce, now, would you please introduce Item 5?
Thank you again, Mr. Kitchen. Item H5, Universal Within a System report on internal and external audit activity for the period of August 24th to October 18th. Each of you were sent a list of internal and external reports as far as the summary completed by the various auditors since the last board meeting. Also included are audits that are in progress and also a timetable for follow-up audits on recommendations that have been made in previous reports. I have all of the reports that were issued. Should any of you want to see the entire report? And I did not know any concerns that should be brought up at this time. This is a report only, and no action by the board is necessary.
Okay, thank you. Charles, I believe, I'm sorry? You're welcome. Okay. Charles, I believe you're going to handle Item 6?
Yes, sir, Mr. Kitchen. And can everyone see my screen with this table? Hopefully?
Yes, Charles, we can see it.
Okay, good, thank you. This Item H6 is our quarterly financial report. This one is for the end of the year, so June 30, 2020. And this one is also going to be a little different because I'm going to provide both a budgetary update and an update on our financial statements. So, and I'm not going to highlight everything in here. Obviously, there are lots of numbers going on in these schedules, so I'll just pick up on a couple of things. And if you'll notice, in this table, under self-generated revenues, which is the last line before the total for revenues, self-generated revenues compared, the actuals compared to the budget are down approximately $34 million. This is primarily due to the shutdown and the inability to operate on campuses. But this is, again, comparing the actuals to the budget. You'll also see the line above, the $48 million. That's CARES Act funds. Those are not in the actual revenues, but they are in the budget. The actual state general fund direct appropriation, comparing prior year to current year, we were up about $10 million, and that's this first line here. By and large, the changes in the budget follow what we would have expected given the current situations. There are some red numbers in there, obviously, when you see decreases in expenses. But if you think about what happened this year, a decrease in some of those expenses would not have been unexpected. Again, our revenues and our expenses, our expenditures balanced relative to the budget. So, okay, Mr. Clark? You're muted, Mr. Clark.
I'm sorry?
No, no problem.
Quick question on the self-generated revenues?
Yes, sir.
I'm curious, you said it's because campuses were unable to operate, inferring that that's residence halls or food service and so on. How much of that decline is tuition revenue?
Actually, and that's a good question that I was going to get to that with the income statement. We can jump ahead just briefly. Our tuition and fee revenues, at their net amounts, were essentially flat. There was a $2 million decrease in tuition and fees, which represented about a 0.4% decrease in tuition. And, you know, despite the fact that we were closed and we've had all these issues, in some respects, I would almost call that a win in that we didn't have deeper losses.
Yeah, very definitely, thank you. But the tuition dollars are included, then, in that self-generated, as well as?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And keep in mind also that those dollars for the self-generated are strictly those in the operating budget. We have other revenues that come in for the financial statement purposes, and you'll see some of that in just a couple of minutes.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions related to the highlights on the budget? In that case, we'll go ahead and we'll move to our financial statements. Now, this table is significantly briefed up compared to the budget numbers. And if you'll look, you will see that our total assets increased by $48 million for the current year. And you'll see the increases of $76 million in the current and other assets. That's primarily from bonds that were issued by Louisiana Tech, which resulted in cash that the university's got, and also with the House Bill appropriation number, that $48 million that we keep talking about, that was recorded as a receivable in the financials. And then there are offsets and some decreases in other categories of assets, and capital assets decreased by $28 million. That's primarily from depreciation. It currently doesn't include any losses in value of assets, nor does it include the effects of the activity or the hurricanes at McNeese. Then in our liabilities, the two areas where I'll highlight are going to be on the non-current liabilities. We have decreases in bond liabilities, but we also have an increase of $70 million in our proportionate share of the net pension liability and an $87 million decrease in our proportionate share of the total other post-employment benefit or retiree healthcare liability. And those numbers come directly from actuaries. We have no control over the determination of those amounts. And then our net position for the current fiscal year increased $43 million. Now, what that means is is that our running deficit of $363 million has decreased to $320 million. If we did not have pensions and OPEB or the retiree healthcare liabilities on our statements, those numbers, we would actually be in positive territory by about $1.5 billion, if not a little more. On our income statement, and here, Mr. Clark, you can see the $2 million decrease in tuition and fees from 2020 to 2019. And again, I consider that a win. Auxiliaries, obviously, took a large hit, $24 million. And part of that, too, is because of the way that we had to classify the student housing refunds, which accounting standards say we had to classify a certain way, and rather than charge those to an expense, those were a reduction in our revenues. We had a $45 million, excuse me, a $55 million increase of state appropriations. Again, House Bill 307, that $48 million is a major part. Also, on our other non-operating, that $45 million, a large portion of that, came from the CARES Act money that was sent directly to the universities.
Charles?
Yes, sir.
I'm curious, I mean, this is a summative report, obviously, so it's system-wide. Are there any concerns that you have for any particular institution or their outliers that should be noted?
In terms of their decreases in net position?
Their decline in revenue at all?
I didn't see anything necessarily that was of significant concern. You can see on this table, Table 6, our decreases in net position this year, increases, decreases, and the change from the prior year to the current year. This is the mix of the universities. Now, part of this, also, part of that $43 million is going to be that House Bill 307 money that's included as a revenue for the current year. And if we were to do a strict $49 million, $48 million here, and if we were to take that out, you would see a $5 million decrease in net position. And I think, in some respects, it's a little difficult to tell because we're still in the middle of the shutdown. And then, of course, McNeese has suffered the losses they've suffered. I do think that we're going to see some different numbers also this year with the postponement of fall athletics for the SWAC and for the Southland Athletic Conference. Those could potentially impact if they don't play in the spring. And my understanding is is that they're looking at doing something in the spring with their sports. And also, my hope would be that because we will have football in the spring, that it's possible the universities could get greater ticket sales because there won't be any other conflicting sports or conflicting football programs at the college and university levels that might take precedence over them. So, at this point, it's kind of hard to tell what that total's going to look like and also in terms of the ongoing issues with the shutdown and when that may end.
Charles, anything else?
Briefly, on the statement of cash flows, Briefly, on the statement of cash flows, our cash position has increased by about twenty-two million dollars. And you'll see some large increases there, Louisiana Tech with their bonds. Northwestern did not issue any new bonds, but their cash increased by four-point-three. And then the remaining decreases range from eighty-two, eighty-three thousand dollars up to the twenty-three thousand, twenty-three million dollars. And if I, I have a, I'm sorry?
Just, Charles, I wanted you to emphasize or maybe explain a point to the members because sometimes it gets, it gets said quickly and we lose sight of the impact, and that's on our net position and the pension liability effect on net position.
Correct.
Louisiana is one, and there are a few states that do this, but we're one of the few states where colleges and universities carry that pension liability on their books. When actually, the liability is a liability of the state, not the institution. But because we do that, it does distort our financial picture relative to the number of our peers. For instance, our friends in Florida have zero net pension liability. A number of institutions in Texas are carrying on the books zero net pension liability. And if we were to cease operations totally as a system or as a higher-end enterprise in Louisiana, that liability remains, and it just transfers onto the books of the state of Louisiana. And so I just bring it up because it's something that I think folks sometimes misunderstand exactly the impact that has on our budgets and certainly our financial statements. Charles, is that accurate?
That's accurate, yes, sir. And I scrolled back up, and if you look at the long-term liabilities of two-point-eight billion dollars, think of it in terms of, and our total liabilities of three billion, two-thirds of that liability comes from two numbers. The pension liability and the other post-employment benefits are that retiree healthcare liability. And the state also passes on through through the employer contributions. Those employer contributions are calculated for all participants in these retirement systems. So, for example, in lasers, the employer retirement contribution for a laser's employee is over forty percent. And I'm going to use round numbers simply because it's easier. So, if you've got a hundred-thousand-dollar employee, you're paying a hundred-forty-thousand dollars with retirement before healthcare, before any lever accruals or any other benefits. On the other post-employment benefits side, the state is not funding that liability. So, any changes that occur in that liability are the result of actuarial calculations based on changing their assumptions and without trying to be too technical. So, they use things like experience or life expectancy. Do we have people who retire early? Do we have people who leave before they retire? All those types of things affect those calculations. So, and that's a bit of a problem because these benefits are constitutionally mandated to be paid at the state level, yet all of that is flowing down into the universities and all of the state entities. So, are there any other questions on any of that?
Charles, I guess one point also probably is worthwhile made. It's the current years, the FY twenty budget has been supported by some one-time funds. We anticipate using the CARES money, and I believe there's some other monies the state made available in order for us to get through the FY twenty year. But if we don't find, or if the state doesn't find, you know, some monies to replace those amounts, you know, then, you know, there's going to be some, you know, significant financial issues or hurdles that we're going to have to overcome as a system going into the FY twenty-twenty-two fiscal year. Is that not correct?
That's correct. Obviously, there are concerns relative to how long the shutdown's going to last because that would have a direct impact on the state's revenues. And the state could see itself in a position of having to reduce appropriations to state entities. This year, with the House bill three oh seven, the forty-eight million dollars that was appropriated, that has given us cash, though we're not, though our appropriations for twenty-twenty-one are not at the twenty-twenty level, we were still suffering some losses, but the extent of those losses is mitigated somewhat or in great part because of that forty-eight million. If we're going into the spring and if the situation hasn't stabilized, then going into fiscal twenty-twenty-two, the state could see some problems.
And Mr. Kitchen, if I could, for higher education for this year, there was a use of CARES Act dollars to eliminate COVID nineteen-related losses of about a hundred million dollars for the entirety of higher education. In addition to that, there was a twenty-one-point-seven million dollar total decrease in state funds for higher education. So, the gap for this year from last year, if you take out those CARES Act dollars, would be a hundred-twenty-one-point-seven million.
Right.
That's the exposure that we have as an enterprise going into next year. I will tell you that the revenues that have been realized by the state exceed their expectations and exceed the forecast to this point. The mitigation efforts been put in place for the virus have kept Louisiana from having a third peak to date. But as you know, there are a number of variables and a number of uncertainties. That's something we're going to have to be playing with a close eye on as a system, certainly as a higher-ed community. And we're our work with the legislature going into next year and determining what our financing model is going to look like. I think you could see some very significant shifts in the financing model going forward. Not necessarily completely negative, but just shifts, right? That mean we have to shift our, some key parts of our operations and really look to some alternative forms of revenue if we're going to look like any semblance of it now. It's a, and it's a long-term reckoning that has been building for years. It's been hastened by COVID nineteen, in my opinion. We do believe that the progress has been made at the federal level on another stimulus bill. And we do believe that there is a vested interest at multiple levels of government to sustain investments in our work, but simply because of return on investment, because of our meaningfulness to communities. And so we have a lot of tools in our tool chest, if you will. But it is something we're going to have to pay very, very close attention to for the next eighteen to thirty-six months.
Right. Jim, I appreciate those comments. I just wanted, you know, make sure for the benefit of the board that, you know, we still have some real challenges to overcome, and it is going to take close monitoring of the budget situation for us to know how to proceed. So, it's an evolving story. I don't think anybody has any answers at this point, but it's one that we may, we have to be mindful of. Thank you.
Lot of questions, no answers.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. That's true. Crystal ball's not working that well. Any other, you know, comments of Charles with regard to the financial reporting or the finance committee agenda items?
If I've got just another second, Mr. Kitchen, I'll just give a brief update also on our fiscal twenty-twenty audit from the legislative auditor.
Okay.
The legislative auditor has auditors at six of our universities, and also they've got a team assigned at the system level. They're beginning to get the results of the procedures from the individual universities turned in at the system level. I'm working on the final report that we're going to be submitting. And currently, I've been working with the legislative auditor on a regular basis. Currently, I'm not aware of any material issues that have arisen relative to the financial statements. It's always likely that we'll have some audit adjustments to the numbers that are presented here in our financial statement analysis. But right now, we don't see anything that looks material to the financial statements.
Okay, anything else? Okay, is there any other business to come before the finance committee? If not, Mr. Romero, these are all the items for the finance committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kitchen. We'll proceed to the personnel committee. Mr. Robinson will address items that will be presented in that committee.
Thank you, sir. Called to audit the personnel committee. We have two items on the personnel committee agenda for today. Both are considered agenda items. Dr. Jones, will you provide us with an overview of each item?
Thank you, Mr. Robinson, and good afternoon, board members. Item I one is University of Louisiana Lafayette's request for approval to appoint Dr. Linda Nichols as the dean of the BI Moody College of Business Administration effective August fifteenth, twenty-twenty. And item I two is the University of Louisiana Monroe's request for approval to appoint Dr. Valerie S. Fields as vice president for student affairs effective October twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty. And that concludes the items to be considered.
All items on the agenda have been reviewed by staff and are recommended for approval. Of course, if there are any questions, we would welcome those questions at this time. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? There being no further discussion required, I will ask for a motion in a second to approve the items as presented.
Move Liz Pierre. Second?
Liz Pierre moved. Who was that second?
Lola.
Ms. Donahue seconds. Are there any objections? Those items are approved without objections. I will yield the floor to the university presidents and/or the named employees for any words they want to, or comments they want to make at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's let that one more chair see again.
Mr. Chairman, we have President Ron Berry from ULM who would like to introduce Dr. Valerie Fields.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson, Chairman Romero, board members. It's an honor and privilege for me to be here this morning with you to introduce Dr. Valerie Fields, our new vice president of student affairs. Dr. Fields is not new to the state of Louisiana, R. Monroe. She was born in Winsboro, has a bachelor's degree from Southern University, two degrees from ULM, and a doctorate from Louisiana Tech University. She also did some postgraduate work at Harvard in their leadership program. She's been a kindergarten teacher. She's worked at ULM in student affairs, and then most recently, before coming back to ULM in South Carolina in roles in student affairs and academic affairs. She joined ULM, our family again, this July as an interim vice president. And boy, can I tell you, she is phenomenal. She hit the ground running. She is a great team player. Just an awesome individual that holds our students accountable, but makes sure they're taken care of and treated fairly. And as, she's really the first appointee of mine as president, and I couldn't be prouder. She is a professional, extremely intelligent, talented student affairs leader. And so she's with us this morning, and I would just like to say congratulations to her on her appointment and ask her to say a few words.
Good afternoon, and I would just like to say thank you for the appointment and approval. So, thank you to everyone for that. But also, with that same vein, I would like to say that I'm very excited to be a part of the ULM family again and very excited to be here on our talents-out Thursday. So, it's a great day on the bayou, and we're very excited about being here and continuing to do the work that has been set aside for us to do. Very excited to be on the team with Dr. Berry. And as you can see, I'm surrounded by all of the student affairs team members, leadership team, and also other leadership members here at ULM. And so I'm very excited to be with them on today for the support that they have offered me as me being here in leadership. And just again, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you. And I would like for everyone to know that as we move forward, we will be doing that through the lenses of the student affairs department to make sure that our students are going to be first with the Student First Initiative. And also, keeping in mind the things that Dr. Berry has set before us and tracking along with making a difference in the lives of those individuals that are here with us on this campus. And so that is going to be our trajectory as we move forward. And again, thanks, everyone, for everything.
This is James Carter. I want to acknowledge and thank Dr. Berry. He spoke highly of Dr. Fields during his interview process. And he kept his word and put her in a position of influence and importance. And so I want to thank you for keeping your word and making a very wise and intelligent decision.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Carter, for making that expression. I, too, wanted to thank Dr. Berry. I took from our conversation that that was to be perhaps your priority moving into the position, and you certainly have lived up to that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would like to just add a thank you to Dr. Fields for returning to ULM and to bring some substantial influence to helping us to build a quality and really well-represented team of leaders. I know that with Dr. Berry's appointment as president, your elevation and permanent appointment in the role you're serving, we're definitely taking a good direction. I really am pleased that we have an opportunity to see talent who are products of our universities while we hire many great, talented individuals from throughout the country. It is always very rewarding when we see individuals who have achieved a number of great things and have progressed through our system. Even today, with Dr. Henderson's development of the Management Leadership Institute, we're seeing our talent pool prove to be much more competitive and successful and benchmarked against applicants that pursue leadership positions throughout our campuses. Dr. Fields has served at other campuses very successfully, and it's prideful to me that we've seen a return, and I look forward to seeing some really good things from you and hope to see you real soon.
Thank you.
Are there other comments? Recognizing, then we will, yes.
Dr. Abair, I think, will be introducing Dr. Nichols.
Yes, thank you. It's my honor to introduce Dr. Linda Nichols, who will be serving as the dean of the BI Moody III College of Business at the University of Louisiana Lafayette. Dr. Nichols comes to us with an extraordinary amount of experience administratively. Most recently, serving as the dean of the Collins College of Business at the University of Tulsa, where she also served as the director of School of Energy, Economics, Policy, and Commerce. Prior to that, she was at Texas Tech University, where she served as director of accounting programs and where she launched a wonderful career as a professor. She's a prolific scholar with numerous publications, including two books in oil and gas accounting. So, we're delighted to have her here. She understands the economy of Louisiana. And more importantly, she understands Louisiana. Having received a bachelor's degree in accounting from the University of New Orleans, she is a product of our system, and then a PhD in accounting from LSU. She knows well what Louisiana's all about. She joined us in mid-August, and in an effort to assist in her reacclamation to Louisiana, we asked that in her first month and a half, she navigate through a pandemic and two hurricanes. I'm happy to report that she successfully navigated those obstacles, and I'm delighted to introduce to you Dr. Linda Nichols.
Thank you. First of all, let me tell you how honored I have been to to receive this offer to come back to Louisiana, especially the University of Louisiana Lafayette. I just feel like I am at home. In the two months I've been here now, this is a very special place. The students are amazing. They are supportive and hard-working. And our faculty have the interest of students at heart in everything we do. As Jamie said, I have a strong ties to Louisiana. Most of my lifelong friends, as well as my husband, were my result of being at the University of New Orleans. I also have a daughter who graduated from Louisiana Tech University. I am just thrilled to be here. We are moving the college forward. We are going to be a cutting-edge, innovative university with an innovative business college, doing some interdisciplinary work. I just look forward to all the years ahead that I have here and making this just an outstanding place. And I thank you for the approval of my appointment. Thank you.
Dr. Fields and Dr. Nichols, I extend my congratulations to both of you and wish you all the best of luck as you proceed in your already great careers.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to extend a congratulations to Dr. Nichols. Have the opportunity to serve on an advisory panel with the Business College, and certainly, Dr. Abair has been engaged with that group for some time. And Dr. Nichols, it's very comforting to welcome you officially and look forward to working very closely with you. We look to see some We look to see some really great things come out of the Moody Business College and know that with your leadership and adaptability, we'll see some real good, positive things proceed from your time on ULS campus. Thank you, and again, for returning home, and it's a pleasure to see a product of one of our universities elevate to a leadership position on one of our campuses.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say something also. Dr. Nichols with a PhD in accounting, they said you're much smarter than all the lawyers on this line, right?
Amen.
I heard that. They said what we do is easy stuff compared to your accomplishments. So look, just congratulations and thank you for being a part of the ULM, the broader ULM family, but more specifically for the university that you're going to so well serve. Thank you, and leave.
And Dr. Nichols, I would be remiss if I didn't provide a personal welcome as well from Lafayette, having had a daughter graduate from the College of Business at UL. Very proud of it and very proud of you for assuming this position. So thank you.
Anyone else? Recognizing none. Is there other business to come before us at this time?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, because of the timing of board meetings and sometimes the market conditions around recruiting, especially in athletics, our universities have to make decisions prior to being able to come to the board or not in concert with the board. So it's not contemporaneous. I wanted to invite board members tomorrow at 11 o'clock. Louisiana Tech has just released, they will be naming their next athletic director. Of course, that is contingent upon board approval going forward. But it's an extraordinarily exciting announcement for Tech because of the background and the capabilities of this new athletic director. Tommy McClellan, as you know, the longtime athletic director at Louisiana Tech, left to Vanderbilt last month. And tomorrow, Tech will be announcing the appointment of Dr. Eric A. Wood. He is currently the Deputy Athletic Director at University of Central Florida. I think you've all seen the ascendancy of UCF sports over the last decade. And this is a tremendous addition, not only to Louisiana Tech staff, but to the ULS system. And so I'll have a link sent to you so you can watch that press conference if you have time at 11 tomorrow. It's a great day for Louisiana Tech.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson. Other business? There being no other business, Mr. Chairman, I yield back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. We have some really exciting things, and again, as we watch the progression of our leadership, we know we're in good hands as our students, our athletes, our stakeholders and the like have an opportunity to experience some really progressive thinkers as they step into their roles. Mr. Salter will address items under the Legislative Committee at this time.
As all of you know, the second extraordinary session of the Legislature is underway, and they have to adjourn no later than October the 27th. Kami is going to give us an update on instruments that are important to our work. Kami?
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Salter. Great to see all you board members. As a fall treat, the Legislature convened in that extraordinary session of 2020 on September 28th. Through this session, we have had several bills relevant to our work in higher education and a lot of positive support from legislators to get important instruments through the process. I'm just going to go through a few of the bills, and it'll be a short report. Senate Bill 30 authored by Senator Milligan has made its way through the process and is awaiting the governor's signature. The bill provides restrictions in the purchase of telecommunication and video equipment. It just assures that equipment purchased through the vendor is not procured through a company that is banned on the federal registry. The onus is on the bidder to provide proof to our procurement officers who just need to verify the affidavit provided. House Bill 40 by Representative Garret Fallow provides tops accommodations to those students impacted by Hurricane Laura and Delta. It has passed the chambers. The, I will say, the House, the Senate Education Committee has taken a real interest in southwest Louisiana, and Chairman Fields especially has taken a real interest, and I know they're going to take good care of Lake Charles and McNeese going forward. SB 32 authored by Senator Cleo Fields grants certain operational autonomies to our university. You may remember similar bills stalled in the process in the previous two sessions. This bill has made it through the process and is awaiting the governor's signature. I will note that previous iterations of this bill had included fee autonomy as well. SB 32 only addresses those operational autonomies, such as the ability to retain funds unobligated at the end of the fiscal year, the ability to dispose of obsolete equipment, and exemption from participation in the state's risk management program. Unlike previous bills that included fee autonomy, there is no sunset on these autonomies. So we should have these moving forward. Senate Bills 44 and 45, also authored by Senator Fields, will allow out-of-state board members to fill a maximum of two of the at-large seats on our university management boards. It's Dean Lord Cook Act after the popular LSU booster who died earlier this year. This presents an opportunity to kind of broaden the expertise with new perspectives and experiences. We have alumni leaders with ties to our institutions throughout the country, and many would love to give back to our member institutions in the form of board service. Both bills have passed the chambers and are awaiting signature. SB 44 is a constitutional amendment that will go to a vote of the people in the December election. So that's the gist of it. We tracked a few other bills that either stalled in the process, were amended to no longer impact our work, or only produce minor changes that won't result in any changes in operation. Like Mr. Salter said, the second session must, or second special session must adjourn signing no later than 6:00 on October 27th, but there are some rumblings that they may adjourn tomorrow, so fingers crossed. We are pleased with the support we've received on the few instruments of interest, and will continue to advocate to legislators between now and the 2021 regular session to ensure the priorities of our system are considered. We do have new PAR guides to distribute to you. Those in person today will receive them before you leave, and we will be mailing copies of the legislative guides to you in the coming weeks. And that's all for my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Kami, I would like to point out on SB 44 and 45, Senator Fields, of course, prefiled those bills, but before he introduced them, he brought the presidents of each of the systems and the chairmans, the chairs of the boards of those systems into chambers and had a very open participatory conversation. I bring that up to tell you that it's, because I want to thank him. To me, it's a model of legislative leadership and the way that you can collaborate and in the legislative process, bringing stakeholders to the table. And I know Chair Romero was there. I thought it was one of the most inclusive approaches to the development of a legislative instrument that I have seen. And as our, you know, he's not new to the Capitol, but he is somewhat new as our Senate Education Chair, and I think it bodes quite well for our future.
Thank you, Kami. Do we, this is a report, and of course, doesn't require any action, but the board. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Any comments from the public? We don't have any other bids this time, as far as I know. Do we have other business? If not, we'll put them to the board. Oh, go ahead. What was the question or comment? Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Salter. Dr. Henderson, if you would, present your report at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So board members, you were emailed copies of the personnel actions for review. They've been reviewed by staff, and they're recommended for approval. Mr. Chairman, we did a motion and a second, and then a roll call vote.
We have a motion, a tight motion by Mr. Salter, a second by Ms. Pierre. Carol, if you please, call the roll.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Carter? Dr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford? Ms. Dunahoe?
Yes.
Dr. Egan?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Methvin?
Yeah.
Mr. Murphy? Mr. Murphy? Ms. Pierre?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
And Mr. Salter?
Yes.
The motion's approved.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Last time that we met, I provided an update on Hurricane Laura and its impact on six of our non-member institutions. Of course, since that meeting, Hurricane Delta ravaged southwest Louisiana, making landfall just 15 miles to the east of where Hurricane Laura hit. We had significant damage at McNeese. I believe it was 137 buildings, multiple roofs that were destroyed by Hurricane Laura. They were mitigated in time for Hurricane Delta and in time for the mitigation to be removed and for Delta to dump 16 inches of water into those buildings. I've been to Lake Charles and McNeese several times since the storm, and I can tell you with great confidence that the people of Lake Charles and southwest Louisiana are resolute. And we could not ask for a better leader of our institution at this time than President Burckell. And so I asked him if he would appear today to give you an update on where we are. He got to entertain, I believe, and I hope you got to see Robert Roberts this morning as she came through McNeese. She is a Southeastern graduate, and of course, she is a world-famous television personality. But she gave her time and the attention of a nation to McNeese and Lake Charles today. And so I want to thank John Crane by extension and those at Southeastern who prepared her for that. President Burckell.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Henderson, and Mr. Chairman and members of our board. First, let me first thank the non-member institutions for the help that they gave us through these storms and the numerous amounts of supplies that they sent over to us. Our students, faculty, and staff have made great use of those, and I can't thank you enough, and I can't thank you enough for the other president's support during this time. Also, I want to thank the board members that had opportunity to come and visit Lake Charles during this time. Your presence was duly noted, and we were grateful for just the moral support that you gave us. Let me give you a little bit of an update. First and foremost, on behalf of our leadership team, first on our mind was the health, safety, and welfare of our faculty, staff, and students. That was first and foremost before we thought about repairs to the campus. Our student body and our faculty and our personnel was first and foremost on our mind. And yes, you would know, as you would think, you know, and understand, many of our faculty and our students, their homes were destroyed. There's not a roof in Calcasieu Parish that was not damaged. Trees fell on homes. Many folks who were able to get back into their homes, tarps came off during Delta and rain poured in. And for instance, I have a student who told me that she had to evacuate her home. She was in my class as I was doing a health and welfare check, had to evacuate her home because of flooding from the storm. And so it's just kind of one wave after the next, you know? COVID was one thing, then Hurricane Laura was another punch, then another wave of it was this latest storm. But I'll just tell you that our folks are just resilient. They just won't quit. It's a matter of the will every day to wake up and to just move forward, whether it's repairing your home, taking care of your family, finding a way to get your work back online and being done by faculty members who have been creative and innovative through all of this. And I can't say enough about our students who just won't quit, and they have a great spirit about them that, you know, our faculty and staff are making sure that our students are having enough time and enough resources available to them to make sure that they can get their work done during the semester. If necessary, they'll receive incompletes, and they'll be able to complete those courses as before the beginning of next semester. We will have graduation in December. We'll have two different ceremonies, making sure we have all the proper social distancing, but we're going to do those in person. And we may have up to six different graduations to make sure that we recognize every one of the students from the spring that desires to come back and our fall graduates. As Dr. Henderson told you, there's not a building or a roof on campus that is not being replaced. So when the disaster took place, we recognized it was a disaster, but now we're looking for opportunity to build our institution back stronger and more resilient in coming back. We'll have new roofs on every building. Many buildings that had maybe one floor of damage from water now have two and three floors because of the second storm. We divided, well, first of all, the governor has been just wonderful, and they're very supportive in his staff. They have allowed us to take control of our rebuild. Working with FPNC, we were able to hire our own project manager, GEC, who's going to lead the project, but also lead the FEMA development of those project worksheets. In nine days, they performed assessments on 137 buildings that were all done according to FEMA specifications to make sure that the proper documentation is in place so that when we present this to ORM and back through the, to the federal government, that there'll be no problems with getting reimbursed from FEMA. With that, we divided the campus into seven different zones, and each one of those zones has their own A and E group, architectural and engineering group, and they have recently had bids right now. We have bids on two of those zones on the academic campus. The first, the first one was done this morning at 10:00, and the damages came in at $23.9 million. And they'll probably be about 25% more in change orders for those different, for that zone itself. We're looking at damages in the magnitude of $125 to $150 million, we think, at the end of the day. You know, so we have four zones that are being bid out, two of them today, two of them tomorrow, and our academic zone, I mean, our athletic zones, the Health and Human Performance Center, that new building, took about $20 million of damage, and our farm will all be bid out probably next week. So we're going to see campus coming back simultaneously all across campus, all seven zones will be coming back simultaneous, and we're going to start the semester off academically online, but we're going to have a hybrid approach to many of the classes that as the buildings, our academic buildings come back, and we gave them a January 8 deadline for many of these buildings. As they come back, we're going to start to bring our students back in, back into classes as those buildings come back. The first and foremost, though, was making sure that our dormitories, our student housing is back in January so that we can bring our students back and have housing for them. We're also going to have temporary housing for any dorms that are not back so that our students have a place to be on campus, and this housing will be on campus. So we're moving forward, and you know, we're optimistic and taking advantage of every opportunity we have to make sure that our campus comes back better and stronger and that our students are served in a very efficient and compassionate way.
Thank you, Dr. Burckell. And board members, I know, most of you know, Dr. Burckell played middle linebacker at McNeese 40 years ago. But he is, he brings that mentality to the work every day. He's very aggressive in advocating for students and faculty in the mission of McNeese, and it's got exactly the right mindset during this time. We do run into bureaucracy, though, and we have a bureaucratic hangup right now, but he'll be here tomorrow with me at 1:00, and we've got some resources in administration that are going to help us knock that bureaucracy down. That's to be expected. But it's that day-to-day tenacity and ferocity that is going to bring McNeese better than it was before the storms. And I'm sorry, Ms. Dunahoe, you had your hand raised.
Yes, I just wanted to ask Dr. Burckell, how is the internet and Wi-Fi service?
Well, you know, Suddenlink has been very slow to bring back internet across a big portion of southwest Louisiana. So what we did is we bought 1,000 hotspots, and we handed those out. We had students who were having internet issues. They came in, and they received those hotspots and can take them home, and they have a three-month data card that goes with those. But we also have places on campus that were not destroyed, like the Seed Center, our Alumni Center, even the parking lot where they can come and they can connect. So faculty have a place to go if they need connectivity, if they want to be on campus, but every one of those folks have a hotspot that's been given to them. But every one of those folks have a hotspot that's been given to them.
Great, great. I just know that at the Regents meeting, we lost two people from Southwest Louisiana because they, they lost their internet service and they had to, you know, bow out of the meeting. So I know that's an ongoing problem.
Let me just say, we've been very proud of our, of our enrollment management group. Uh, going into this semester, we were up about a hundred and fifty students from last fall with COVID and everything. And you know that, uh, we had five days of classes and then we were off preparing for the storm. So our fourteenth day of class did not happen till the end of September. And that's generally the official count that we have of students, of our student body. And that's also the day that we have the dispersment of student, federal, uh, financial student aid. So that's why that day is important. We're glad to tell you that in Rita, we lost about ten percent of our student body. Coming back from, uh, on the fourteenth day of classes, we were only down fifteen students from where we were last fall. So we lost that hundred and fifty, but we basically maintained where we were last fall. And as of after this last storm, as of today, we're only down sixty-nine students. So we've been able to maintain those students and retain them and making sure that they're having the resources and, and the, and the, I guess, the, uh, the care from our faculty members to make sure that they understand and that they're working with them to get through the semester.
Folks, the McNeese Foundation has set up a hurricane relief fund to aid the campus community. Uh, there are faculty, staff and students in that community that would be greatly appreciative of any help you can provide. I'm sure the link is sent to you and if you could help us and disseminate that to your circle of influence, we would greatly appreciate it. Uh, these folks are strong, but they're going to be stronger because they have our support. And speaking of support, our, our member institutions continue to provide support for McNeese. We have two hundred and fifty students that have signed up for what we call the Cowboy Relief Effort. And that's students that are gaining access to resources on campuses throughout the state. I particularly want to, uh, thank Joe Savoie and the UL Lafayette community for opening their doors. Uh, I called Joe, uh, and it took him about, I don't know, less than a minute to say, yeah, we'll take whatever, we'll take whatever we need to do. We'll do whatever we need to do to house students, to house a basketball team, to give them access to workout facilities, uh, to give students access to counseling facilities. Uh, and the entire UL Lafayette community, the Raging Cage community just embraced McNeese. Uh, they were supposed to play football the first weekend of this year, uh, which is always a fun rivalry. It's a storied rivalry, a great tradition. Uh, but I, I believe this is even going to be much more memorable. The relationship between UL Lafayette and McNeese, and I think it's going to last for some time. And Joe, thank you for that. Now, not a week goes by that we don't see some other kind of support. A student group is heading to Lake Charles or an organization of some, some type from our system to support their sister institution. And I want to ask Erica Calle to talk about another support effort and some other student affairs matters. So please welcome Ms. Calle.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson. This is the perfect segue to the first item that I would like to share with everyone. Our Student Advisory Council is working on a project to assist the McNeese community in the wake of the devastation that occurred from the two storms. Under the leadership of Ms. L'Oreal Williams, Southeastern Louisiana University SGA president, students from UL System Member Institutions plan on joining forces to do a day of service on McNeese's campus. This project is slated to take place on November twenty-first. I am proud of the students' willingness to roll up their sleeves and get knee-deep in work to help their sister institution. We will share the plans with you once everything has been solidified. So, Dr. Burkell, you have more help coming. The second thing that I wanted to share with everyone is regarding Title IX. Um, I'd just like to provide you with an update of where we are with the new Title IX regs. If you recall, in May, there were some drastic changes to the Title IX law. As a result, the system revised its sexual misconduct policy and presented to you for adoption in June. On August fourteenth, the final Title IX regulations went into effect, at which time colleges and universities were required to have their revised policies finalized and developed processes according to the new rules. I'm pleased to say that all UL System campuses have revised their sexual misconduct policies and published those policies to their websites. Each of our institutions has a team, a Title IX team in place, which consists of a Title IX coordinator, a deputy coordinator, an investigator, advisor and decision maker. The names of the Title IX coordinators are displayed prominently on their respective websites. As well, the Title IX teams have been immersed in training and I am confident that they are in a good place regarding the new Title IX regulations. I would like to personally thank the Title IX coordinators and deputy coordinators for being able to pivot quickly to make sure that we are adhering to the new guidelines. So I really, really appreciate it and thanks to all the presidents for their support. Thank you, Dr. Henderson.
Thank you, Erica. And I got really confused because of my script that said Title IV compliance. And I thought, my goodness, I didn't know we had an issue with Title IV. So I was Title IX and I'm relieved. Thank you, Erica.
You're welcome.
Related to that, I'm just curious, um, the President Trump's executive order that prohibits, uh, the continuation of diversity, equity, inclusion training by federal contractors, I know has caused quite a bit of discussion in the post-secondary world. I'm curious if, you know, I'm not certain it ties to the Title IX discussion, but talking workshops prompted me to think, is there anything that the system is aware of or are institutions being impacted? Are we, what is our response to that?
Thank you, Dr. Clark, and that is such a great, great point. And it is related to Title IX because, you know, so many, uh, aspects of our work are impacted by either dear colleague letters or executive orders that come outside of the legislative process, right? There are reinterpretations of the process, refocusing of certain programs. And it can become a burden because we develop systems or develop cultures around these federal guidelines. Uh, I don't want to put her on the spot. I believe she's, she's listening and available. Uh, Claire Norris actually led a conversation with our system, with our university presidents this morning on exactly the executive order that you're talking about. And, and I'd like Claire, if she doesn't mind, to, to kind of recap that conversation if you're there.
Sure. Can you guys hear me okay? Uh, Dr. Clark, that's a great question and it's something that we are definitely well aware of. Um, a couple of our CDOs have called as well as faculty members very concerned about what this executive order could mean for diversity and inclusion training. Um, we've had, um, our attorney as well as Dr. Jones read, um, the executive order along with me. And we've all come to the same conclusion, which is, at least at this point, um, the executive order is not, um, requiring all diversity and inclusion trainings to cease. Um, what it is requiring is that, um, the trainers cannot, um, encourage or, um, suggest that, um, folks are inherently racist or sexist based on their demographics. So, um, picking on the males for a second, um, it would not be appropriate for me to say all men um, are inherently sexist because of their gender. And so, um, our presidents are aware of the order. Um, you know, one of the things I think that we are thinking about is how does that impact academic freedom? Um, as well as freedom of speech. Um, but I, I think that at least at this point, we, we do have some direction in terms of we are still allowed to talk about theories related to diversity, inclusion, regardless of the theory. It just means we can't teach that all are races or sexes based on the color of their skin or gender. Does that help any?
Yes, I appreciate that, Claire, very much. I'm glad that you're working with presidents and so on. Uh, I know it's been difficult for a number of different vantage points. Uh, and just curious as to where we were with that. Thanks.
And Claire, thank you for always being ready. She's amazing. You'll hear more from her in just a minute. Uh, but first I want to talk a little bit about COVID-19. I just mentioned that the presidents were gathered around this sofa this morning. Uh, and as we started the meeting, it kind of dawned on us, the last time we all sat around this couch was on March ninth of this year. And that was the opening day of the legislative session. It was also the day that we realized that COVID-19 was going to be declared a global pandemic and was going to reshape, uh, the entirety of our operation at a scale greater than we could have imagined. Now, here we are, seven months later, seven, eight months, the math, seven years, ten years later. Uh, our universities continue their efforts to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. And then hearing closely to the systemic guidelines that we created and their own comprehensive plans. Uh, and they've done an extraordinary job. Uh, each week the institutions reporting, uh, new cases, confirmed cases to the Department of Health and provides a weekly update on higher education. It's a helpful exercise that allows us to get an idea of the prevalence of the virus in our communities. Uh, but it's not a perfect science. So a, a great deal of the data is self-reported and it leaves room for error. But the summer months, if you think about them, they were, they were filled with some, uh, quite a bit of uncertainty about whether we'd be able to open safely. Were the plans that we were putting together that were based on the latest science, based on the best knowledge we had? Was it going to work? And I will tell you that because of the leadership on our campuses, because of the leadership of our administrations, because of the cooperation and, and the good consciousness of faculty and students and staff, uh, it has worked. It's worked quite well. There's fewer than fifteen hundred cases, uh, system-wide since the start of the semester. And just over four hundred of those cases are among students living on campus. Typically, those have been, uh, associated with, uh, uh, a close athletic team. Uh, or, uh, students that can't quite seem to understand that social gatherings are in fact not, uh, the best use of your wisdom at this time. I'm trying not to be too condemnatory if I can. And we've responded well when we've identified an outbreak by stepping in quickly to ensure that we're taking care of the infected as, and most of these have been asymptomatic. But we've stepped in and then of course doing, uh, contact tracing and ensuring that we're quarantining and isolating those as appropriate. It's worked quite well. But it's vital that we remain vigilant and, and this is why. We talked a lot this morning about PPE, mask-wearing fatigue, social distancing fatigue, um, hand washing fatigue. I know that, uh, I have to remind myself to sing the ABCs as I'm washing my hands, uh, to wash long enough. Uh, it gets tiring. But in the same way, we've seen a lot of resilience on the part of our students and that they're adapting to these new realities behaviorally. Uh, we've got to remain vigilant and we're seeing a, uh, an uptick in cases and hospitalizations across the country. Louisiana is, I wish I had something wood next to me. I want to knock on wood. Because of, yeah, because of some of the mitigation efforts, the leadership of our governor, of course, leadership of LDH, partnerships with those like the National Guard, uh, right now we're a success story for, for the United States. But we do see, we know that that's fragile. It's tenuous at best. And that any relaxation in our, in our behaviors can lead to a, uh, an uptick in cases. We're seeing it in Europe. We're seeing it in other states across the country. So we're, we're finding ways to refresh the message, to ensure that we're getting the point across to students that they're, uh, that this is going to be with us for some time. Uh, John Crane shared with us, uh, uh, a report he got from an infectious disease doctor this week. It was talking about COVID-19 being with us for not just the next few months, but for the next year and possibly longer than that. Uh, I think sometimes we love to find silver bullets in panacea uh, in the terms of a vaccine, and I think any breakthrough is going to be great. I think the science is advancing, so we're getting better in therapeutics. And I think that we're, we're seeing great compliance with, with mask-wearing. Uh, but this is going to be the new normal for us for some time. I think Jimmy, you had a question for me? Or you just, I'm sorry, just clicking your pen. I apologize. So, uh, and, and you know, we're thinking about messaging. We're, we're getting closer to Thanksgiving. We think that that's a, a point certain in time that, you know, we can have some messaging to students and others that you've got four and a half to five weeks before you're going to be gathering with family that probably hasn't been in the same household for long. Take the steps now to protect yourself, to follow the behavioral standards that science has given us so that you can enjoy that Thanksgiving holiday with your family, right? These are things that, that if we want to return to normal, this is the greatest return on investment you could possibly ask for. It's a small cost to pay for a tremendous return. And so, uh, we're going to try to, to, uh, really fine-tune our messages to ensure that not getting stale and they continue to have a faith. I mentioned the National Guard. The National Guard has been prevalent on all of our campuses doing testing. Uh, we also recently received more than sixty thousand Binax Now Rapid COVID Test System-wide. So these tests, uh, the swab doesn't go all the way up into your brain or wherever the swab goes. It just goes about an inch up into, into your nasal passages. Uh, and it's a very easy to administer test. It gives you some results in about fifteen minutes, uh, which is far better than the waiting periods we have seen on other tests. Uh, I will tell you, the NCAA has approved, uh, this case, an antigen test, they have approved antigen test for athletes, for even asymptomatic athletes. So free antigen test a week in, in place of a single PCR test is now acceptable. That's great. One, because the test has been proven to be efficacious. But two, the test costs about five dollars a test, or the PCR test was closer to a hundred dollars per test. So it makes it financially viable for us to protect our athletes and allow them to return to competition. Uh, protecting was never in debate, but allowing them to return safely to competition is going to be a tremendous breakthrough for us. Uh, in addition to individual test, uh, the plan includes opportunities for us. Uh, I want to thank Ramesh Kaleru from UL Lafayette, who has been helping us systemically with the testing protocol. He has worked with Dr. Mark Zappi, who is the professor of POO, is that what you call him?
Yes.
Professor of POO, he will be leading a wastewater testing effort for us uh, to detect viral sheds in particular residence halls so that you can step in with mitigation. Uh, of course, we'll be doing that system-wide. I'm sorry, Dr. Savoie just told me he's an endowed professor of POO. Our member institutions, we will remain vigilant, reducing the spread of COVID-19 through the spring semester and as long as the disease remains a threat to public health. Our work is too important. Shifting gears now to a data dashboard. So the last four years, we've talked a lot about data driving our decision-making. A couple of years ago, goodness, has it been three, Claire, already? Two? We, we acquired Claire Norris, Stohr from the Board of Regents. And then more recently, we acquired license to Tableau, which is the most advanced data visualization tool, user-friendly tool that's on the market. Uh, Dr. Norris has led a team of our professionals from our member institutions to develop dashboards that will help in our decision-making moving forward. And I'd like Claire to, to come forward and share some of the work that you're doing right now.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson. Um, you know, I, I want to start by saying that I work with an incredible team of institutional researchers across our nine institutions that have really brought a level of expertise to this work that I, I just could not have done alone um, at our, at our nine campuses. Um, I'm going to quickly give you some background just so you understand where all this stuff comes from. As you probably know, we are inundated with a bunch of data, um, with, coming from everywhere from, um, federal, um, reporting requirements, uh, state-level reporting requirements as institutional reporting requirements as well as system. And so as a team, we wanted to, one, make sure that we were really answering the questions that were asked of us. Um, a lot of times, you know, folks will say, well, that's just not true. Well, actually, the data is true. It's just depends on the, it depends on the question that's being asked. So we wanted to be, um, really, really careful as to how we created definitions, as to how we answer questions and to allow for, um, uniformity, at least within our system, the system we kind of have somewhat control over. Um, and so I, we got together with this team, we established a data governance committee where we get in the virtual, um, our virtual, uh, conference rooms and we go back and forth and kind of fight it out until we come and we go back and forth and kind of fight it out until we come up with a reasonable definition that is transparent, it's honest, it's fair, and it really gets us to the next level in terms of our predictability, in terms of our evaluations and assessments. So you know, I got with the comms team and I will tell you their work was incredible because they basically took our vision and they made it digestible for every user. And so, and I'm just going to briefly kind of show you some of the categories we came up with. I do want to say this is a work in progress, so it would not hurt my feelings at all if you had some suggestions, so please send them my way. We are constantly going to be updating this website to ensure that new questions are being answered as appropriate. So we have access bucket, success bucket, access. We're looking at those who applied, been admitted and enrolled, looking at end-of-term enrollment data, success measures, looking at retention. We're focused on graduation or degrees awarded. We have faculty and staff. We have budget financials, including tuition. Those are on Pell and so forth. We've also looked at some of our SRAB comparisons. Next step with SRB comparisons is to really drill down and make sure that our institutional SRB categories match those of our SRB peers' categories. And what we've also done here in the data governance sort of area is we've given you a data dictionary. So if you have questions, you're welcome to ask me or the definition should be in this, in this data governance. Again, as those questions come and we notice we're lacking in a definition or we need to strengthen a definition, we will do that. Again, it's a work in progress, but I'll just show you, and I think you kind of have seen some of it before. But you just click on one of these buttons and you'll see here, the comms team has made it really easy for you. If you click on an institution logo, you'll notice the data basically transforms and filters out as needed. You can click on different years here. The data will update. We have end-of-term enrollment. Dr. Raquel did a great job of explaining the difference between 14th class day and end-of-term. We report typically from the system level end-of-term. Again, you can look at this data by by institution and it filters, as you can see, all the way down. You can drill down by groups and the data will change. So if you're interested in that drill down by groups, by demographic, it's available. And that's sort of all I have. If you guys don't have any questions, or if you do, I'm here to answer.
Claire, that's impressive. I look forward to looking through it and probably give you a call and pick your brain a bit.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Claire, and thank you for just all that you do for our system. Folks, you know, I think it was Ronald Reagan said the secret to success is to surround yourself with people smarter than you are and allow them to do their work. And I have become a master of that. And so Claire, thank you for that. Compete Louisiana, it's our program to reengage adult learners. It continues to garner significant attention. It was there was a large write-up in your clips this morning that was by Ken Stickney that was in The Advocate. Told a moving stories of a couple of our students that I hope you enjoy. It's the stories that get me every single time. In addition, we were, earlier this month, Compete Louisiana was featured in Forbes Magazine at a national level and we received the coverage after announcing our Compete Louisiana Academy that Dr. Khan led the development of with the chief academic officers at our institutions. And it was, it was quite a heavy lift. She got it done and I'm grateful to her for that. We're expecting significant growth in Compete Louisiana this year. Part of the validation of the national coverage we've been getting, part of it because of some truly innovative messaging that Kami Geisman and her team have developed. And of course, the fearless leader of the Compete Louisiana program, Katie Barris, whose tireless efforts in managing this program, ensuring students are getting what they need is the secret to success and Katie's done a great job. But I have to share with you just real quickly. Tequila Babin will graduate next spring from UL Lafayette. Excuse me, in December from UL Lafayette. She graduated in December. She posted on social media, it was pictures of her 11-year-old little girl on the campus at UL Lafayette. And this was her message about her little girl. She says, "The last time she was technically with me on campus, I was about three to four months pregnant, filling out paperwork to withdraw. I walked away feeling like a complete failure, believing the lies of the enemy. Today, 11 years later, she accompanied me to retrieve my cap and gown." That's the power of Compete Louisiana. That's the power of removing barriers so that students can finish what they started and they can take control with their own economic futures and they can have that sense of accomplishment. And to Katie and to Brandy, who is Tequila's coach, and of course to Janine, Kami and Claire, who was a brain trust that developed this program. I'm so grateful. It's probably professionally one of the things I'm most proud of. Lastly, for me, speech. You may have noticed we're in a time of somewhat divisiveness. Speech is, has been especially on the, on the margins, has become a little more vitriolic. And we're seeing a little bit of angst around the country. You might, you might imagine we have a presidential election that's underway. Now, as we approach an election, the divisiveness is at somewhat unfamiliarly high levels. And the divide is amplified by the ease that information spreads through social media. I can tweet a 240-character sarcastic sentence quicker than I can do just about anything else in my life. And so people have taken great, great liberties with that. Now, our universities and the university as an idea is long been a hub of activism and it's, it's often a tool in the political divide. It's important that we recognize that our role, one of knowledge sharing where ideas are allowed to flow freely. It was in 1860, I believe it was June of 1860, that Frederick Douglass gave a speech in Boston. And the reason behind the speech was that in the South, it was forbidden to discuss slavery, right? And one of the lines from his speech, he said, "Liberty is meaningless if the right to utter one's thoughts and opinions has ceased to exist." He said, "That of all rights is the dread of tyrants. It is the right which they first of all strike down because they know its power." In 2018, the Louisiana Legislature passed a bill naming our university's public forums. It was unfortunately Act 666. I'll leave that alone. But it was passed. Our board adopted a free speech policy and I'm immensely proud of it. I want to read the preamble to you just to bring it back to your consciousness. It begins, "The University of Louisiana's system is fully committed to free speech among students, faculty, staff and visitors. To fulfill our primary role of discovering and disseminating knowledge, a free interchange of ideas is necessary. We pride ourselves on being bastions of free expression and believe a culture of intense inquiry and informed argument generates lasting ideas. This freedom comes with a responsibility to welcome and promote expression for all people, even in disagreement or opposition. The right is inclusive of peaceful protest and orderly demonstrations, but does not allow any conduct that disrupts university operations or endangers the safeties of others. Our institutions will continue to abide by this policy by maintaining opportunities for free expression, the sharing of ideas." We talked this morning about how we can collectively ensure that our messaging around speech is crystal clear. So that when we do have challenges that come up from various camps, from various groups, we're able to address them in a principled, straightforward way. Because we believe that that responsibility, that right is sacrosanct. And so Chair Romero, unless there are any questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson. Quite a bit of information to catch up on. Significant progress, and I want to thank all of you who chimed in and dialed in to this meeting to share updates with us. Dr. Raquel, our best with you as we support your efforts to recover at McNeese. And we know, as Dr. Henderson shared, that we have leadership of McNeese's campus in the right hands and know that the projects that you have in front of you will be certainly accounted for property with your capabilities and strengths. You know, as we, as we reach the end of an enduring year, I would say this is one of the most interesting and different times that I've seen since I've been on this board. We now are reaching a time where it's incumbent to appoint our next year's officers. In consideration of that, I've appointed Al Perkins, Christine Russell and Joe Salter to the nominating committees. They have graciously accepted. So I look forward to seeing the three of them meet as a committee prior to our December board meeting to bring to the board nominations for the board chairman and board vice chairman. We will all vote ultimately as a board, but look forward to seeing their recommendations come before us in December. I want to certainly express to all of you, just in a brief note, the honor and privilege it has been to work with each of you and work closely with our system staff at all of our campuses. Despite the varying conditions we've worked in, we've adopted and very proud of the things that we've accomplished and what we've worked together to bring our system forward. Normally, we have the opportunity to take our required state ethics training in person in conjunction with our board environment. Due to COVID-19, that will not be an option this year. Please be on the lookout for an email from Mr. Bruce Genet about your annual required ethics and sexual harassment training. We do need to do that prior to the close of the year and I'll ask everyone's attention and cooperation and keep completing that. Otherwise, Bruce is going to pound me to death and make sure I keep following up with all of you. Today, we're going to take some time to complete evaluations of our campus presidents at Nichols and University of New Orleans. Each institutional president is evaluated periodically, as you all know. This month, we're going to evaluate two presidents. First, Dr. Kuhn, as I shared with Nichols, and Dr. Nicolow will equally be reviewed by the board for his service and leadership at UNO. Hence, we'll need a motion to enter an executive session. So moved by Mr. Salter, seconded by Mr. Pierre. Carol, if you could call the roles.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Donahoe?
Yes.
Dr. Egan?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Muffin?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy? Mr. Murphy? Ms. Pierre?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson? Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Salter?
Yes.
The motion is passed.
Thank you, Carol. Proud to engage in the executive session. The board of supervisors for the University of Louisiana's system may meet in executive session to discuss personnel matters under the provisions of Louisiana Revised Statute Title 4217. While on executive session, the board may not make any motions or take any votes. We will proceed to executive session at this time.
Board members, this is Anne. You should have received a notification on your screen inviting you to participate or to join the other room. You'll have to click accept or yes in order to be moved in there.
Anne, I don't see an invitation. Oh, here we go.
Okay, Egan? I just want to make sure there's no board members that have not been moved into the breakout room.
The Board of Supervisors for the University of Louisiana System met at executive session to discuss as noticed on the agenda. While an executive session, no motions were made and our votes taken. Is there a motion to reconvene in open session?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Pierre, seconded by Ms. Bailey. Get out the complete call roll.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Carter? Dr. Clark? Ms. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Dunehoe?
Yes.
Dr. Egan?
Yes.
Ms. Kitchen?
Yes.
Ms. Mathfin?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy? Mr. Ms. Pierre?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Salter?
Yes.
It's approved.
Thank you, Carol. Any comments in the board concern any comments from the board concerning our previous executive session? Hearing none. The Board of Supervisors for the University of Louisiana System may enter into executive session pursuant to the Louisiana revised statute 4216 to discuss pending litigation. The Board is the Board of Supervisors for the University of Louisiana System is now planning to reconvene in executive session if I could have a motion in a second. Moved by Ms. Pierre, seconded by Mr. Salter. Carol, if you could call the roll.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Carter? Dr. Clark? Ms. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Dunehoe?
Yes.
Dr. Egan?
Yes.
Ms. Kitchen?
Yes.
Ms. Mathfin?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy? Ms. Ms. Pierre?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
And Mr. Salter?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Carol. The board will now adjourn to executive session.
While an executive session, no motions were made nor votes taken. Is there a motion to reconvene in open session? Move by Ms. Pierre, second by Ms. Bailey. Carol, if you could call the row.
Live proceedings. I'll make your little side bet. He ain't gonna feel that on his feet.
The Board of Supervisors for the Universal Louisiana System met an executive session to discuss items as noticed on the agenda while an executive session, no motions were taken or votes taken. No more motions were made or votes taken. Is there a motion to return or reconvene in an open session?
No move.
Move by Mr. Salt, the second by Ms. Pierre. All in favor?
Done.
Hi.
Yes. Are there any other comments or items to be brought from the board at this time? Hearing none, I want to thank all of you for the time and participation today. We will not meet again until December 3rd. I hope that all of you have a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday. Enjoy your whatever version of Halloween we have this year as we give our candy to the young people. But we'll keep you informed concerning the details for that meeting in advance of that meeting. Thank you again for your time and participation as I said earlier. Is there any further business to come before the board at this time? Hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Move by Mr. Salter.
Second.
Second by Ms. Pierre. We stand adjourned. Have a great rest of the day and weekend.